Tony of Cochise and State of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020 via Zoom at 7:00 PM. And it's being held in Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Lewis Pollock.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacamino.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins.
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff Teresa Coleman, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Joelle Landers, Personnel Director, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chavet, Police Chief, James Ledbetter, City Attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our moment of silence, there's so many things to think about from Beirut to Bisbee, Arizona. One thing is I heard a statistic today that indicated that it is forecast that by the end of August of this year, the United States will have lost 180,000 people to COVID-19. And I'd like us to reflect on that with the ability to actually make a difference and make sure that that number is not a reality. Please join me. Thank you. Under Proclamations and Announcements, I wanted to indicate that on next Tuesday, the 11th, at 5:30, there'll be a town hall. It'll be via Zoom. And it will be on trash and recycling. And the first 100 people that sign up and register will be able to speak and discuss it. Everybody will be able to actually look at it and watch it via the city Facebook page. And so there's a number of people that have things to ask and things to say about it. So I would encourage you to please join us at that particular time. And with that, we'll go to Call to the Public.
Interesting.
Are you and Anna close together, Joni? That's what's doing it.
Are you using two separate mics?
Yes, yes, yes.
Now, that's the project.
There you go.
Okay, Call to the Public. Joel.
I have two items for Agenda Item Number Six. From Donna Pulling, "Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm concerned about the need for 16 body cams and the expenditure of $65,000 of city funds and $20,000 COVID grant funds for more equipment, especially during these times of financial shortfalls. This $65,000 may be in the police department budget, but shouldn't the council be thinking about reducing budgets for essentials only and not expending funds on non-essentials? 16 body cameras are not essential. If needed at all, seven could be purchased, one for each officer on duty and a backup device and three for recharging, to be rotated during shifts, but not one for each officer. Can you justify the need for this expense at this time? Cameras don't replace proper training and execution of proper procedures. If our officers are properly trained and if they respond to calls in that manner, the gear with which they are equipped is sufficient for those types of calls they are responding to in Bisbee. The policy manual lays out these procedures clearly. It would be important for council to know the breakdown of the types of calls responded to each month, every month. The new dispatch system is designed to provide that information. If this is a knee-jerk reaction to an unfortunate incident that occurred with the animal control officer, then the answer is not more equipment, it's discipline or training or dismissal. Please don't place the onus of bad management and habitual overspending, once again, on the backs of the taxpayer. I look forward to hearing your comments on this, Donna Pulling."
Thank you.
Nicholas Knight, again, Agenda Item Number Six. "I am completely in favor of our police officers wearing body cams. I would prefer that they were automatically activated when the officer leaves their vehicle and that they were not able to be turned off by the officer. There has been some concern about cost. How much are we spending on investigations and lawsuits that could have been cleared up in a jiffy with body cam footage?" Again, Nicholas Knight.
Thank you.
And this is Agenda Item Number Eight. Roberta Brack, "Dear Mayor and Council, my home in Old Bisbee and my formerly peaceful neighborhood have been negatively impacted by an increase in large truck traffic on US 80 as it passes through town. Since construction on the border wall has ramped up in 2020, starting as early as 5:30 AM weekdays, large trucks carrying pipes, cement, and other construction materials roar down the grade. My windows rattle. The use of Jake brakes exacerbates the noise. Please prohibit their use. Respectfully, Roberta Brack."
Thank you.
And this is also Agenda Item Number Eight, Emily Kair. "Dear Ashley, Bill, Leslie, and David, thank you for considering regulating the use of Jake brakes within Bisbee city limits. I live on Chihuahua Hill directly across from Arizona 80, and the loud breaking disrupts the peace and quiet several times each day and night. It is impossible to enjoy a quiet afternoon or to sleep with the windows open anymore. This has been exponentially worse in recent months since the construction ramped up on the border wall. I hope you will put regulations in place to end this. Sincerely, Emily Kair." Again, Number Eight, Pamela Brown. "My husband and I are raising our hands to let the city know that we are all for restricting Jake brakes through the canyon. The sound is obnoxious, and we really feel that they are going too fast down that hill. And if they were going the posted ski limit, they would not need to be using them. And by posting the restriction, those trucks might choose to make the safer route through Sierra Vista to their destination. Thank you for your time, Pamela Brown."
Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Nine, Nolan Gugat. "I want this opinion read at the next council meeting during Call to the Public. Regarding Teresa Coleman's job here, it's been a total failure. Teresa Coleman is incompetent. She's dismissive, and this leads to an atmosphere of discord. In her short time here, she has dismantled the recycling program, and she is currently giving the animal shelter hell. We don't even know if it's going to be funded from month to month. Teresa Coleman does not represent our community, and I think she should leave as soon as possible before we vote the biggest clown, David Smith, out because he acts like a schoolyard bully and obviously has no consciousness. The majority of this council is so old and bitter. I can't imagine being that old and wasting the final years of my life on Earth playing King of the Castle or playing King of the Castle politics for personal gain and cheap political tricks. As you look to buy $65,000 worth of body cameras after Sergeant Carlos Moreno attacked me for having one, there is a word to describe Teresa Coleman and what is going on in the city: twisted. It's totally sick and twisted. I hope the good people of this town rise up against her brutality because while she may put on a big goofy smile, it's totally fake. This woman is an existential threat to our community, and she needs to leave immediately. All she is is David Smith's henchwoman with no mind of her own, and I hope she goes down with his ship." Nolan Gugat.
Thank you.
Number Nine. "Hello, Mayor and Council. In my day-to-day business as an architect in Bisbee submitting plans for permit or other city businesses and initiatives, I have had only good interactions with City Manager Coleman. Aside from a couple of disagreements on the issue of animal control, I feel she has done a great job for the city and has accomplished a lot for us. I hope she continues on for many more years to come and as such helps bring Bisbee to a stable and balanced place. I do not think continuing this pattern of continual replacement of city managers is good for the stability of a city, especially when it comes to the success of long-term projects and relationships with other governmental entities. Thanks, Ben Letley."
Thank you.
Again, Number Nine, Lindsey Kohler. "I'm a big fan of our city manager. She is approachable and responsive and seems level-headed even in the face of controversy. I believe she is a great asset to our diverse city, Lindsey Kohler, and that is all."
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Accounts payable? I see Anna's lips are moving. Your, your, your mic is off, Anna.
He's getting it.
There you go.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $147,859.51.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Klein, since you're on, do you have any questions?
I do have a question on Page Four.
You guys might be a little close still.
Yeah.
There's quite a few under non-cap admin furniture for podium, printer, chairs. Is that for council chambers or for what?
I did not purchase anything for council chambers. I don't know if anybody knows what that is. 1062.
Actually, I think it might, I just looked, it may be under Police Department.
Chief.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thanks. Do you have an answer for that?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we purchased some new tables and chairs for the training room at the Bisbee Police Department.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing I have is on Page Seven, the $1,124.53 for water at West Vista in Houghton. Why is it so large?
Um, we started to water the grass in that area. I did review that bill. It's actually just over, just over a half of what it was last year. Last year at this, it was near. We are actually lower than what it was last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that it, Ms. Klein?
That's it for me.
Okay, Ms. Giacamino?
The bill, I know it's like $107 just to have the service, but the bill this month is $239. What's the increase due to since there's no water going to the pool?
Um, I, which, which one is this?
On Page Seven at the bottom.
Water company, $239. Yes, the bill for that is $150. Um, so, and I did look for the bill on that one. I didn't have the bill. So the, the, we definitely are not, not current right now. So the only thing it is, is for irrigation of the park itself.
And the electric bill? What's the base part for the electric? Your bill is $100. Your bill is $139. That's just the pool, right?
It should just be the pool. I, I thought I was forwarded the APS and it was not. We had just the water bills, so I will have to, to check on that. But again, you're, you're right. The pool is, everything is shut down there. So the only thing is powered is for electricity. So I'll go have to double-check on that for you. I'm sorry, what?
Is there construction going on at the point right now?
The construction is for the outdoor recreation center. They shouldn't be using.
Oh, because I was going to say, maybe that's what happened, so.
No, they, they, they should not be using any of our power.
Okay, well, if you'd let me know, I know.
They will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Ms., Mr. Pollak. Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
This is for Mr. Haro. At the top of Page Five, NAPA Auto Parts. That first line item. Auto track, battery, and.
Sorry, I just muted myself. Um, I, battery, which vehicle that? I don't know offhand. I can check that and I will get back with you on that.
What those items are is what I'd like to know.
Auto track, battery. It looks like it's a multiple item. I'll have to double.
And my second question for you is 6943 in that, in that category. Emergency equipment. 285810. Can you elaborate on what emergency equipment that bought?
That might be Albert.
Yeah, I, I don't have any emergency equipment.
Okay, Albert?
I'm sorry, what, what page was that?
Page Five, top of the page.
Let me see. Let me get to it.
This, it's the second to the last line item in the NAPA category. Just an undercap, NAPA.
That's for, uh, emergency equipment, lights, sirens, things like that for the vehicles.
Thank you, Chief.
Anything else?
No, yep.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of paying accounts payable signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda, there's only one item, and that's Item A. Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on July 21, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Does anybody have anything to ask or comment? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on July 21st, 2020 at 7:00 PM.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Say it again. Did you hear me?
Yeah, Councilmember Klein for the consent agenda.
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item Number Three, Discussion of Possible Approval of Ordinance O2012, authorizing the acceptance of a transfer of real property from William D. Lyon to the city of Bisbee, located on Chihuahua Hill above OK Street, Bisbee. Ms. Coleman, first of all, this will be our second reading of this. So are there any questions of Ms. Coleman that weren't asked or answered last time? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I think Joni's raising her hand.
Actually, I was raising it for Anna.
Oh.
Is Joni raising her hand?
Again, the question I had was the street address.
Yeah, there, there is no street address for these properties. I did review with Joe Ward. There actually was no address reserved for these properties. So that will be a whole nother discussion when it comes time for someone to develop the parcels.
Okay, I just, I just find it odd that we have properties without addresses. Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance 0-20, well, excuse me, O-2012, accepting the transfer of real property from William D. Lyon, located on Chihuahua Hill above OK Street, Bisbee.
I second.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak. Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Going on to Item Number Four, Discussion of Possible Approval of Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA Business Associate Agreement with Paid in Full. Is Ms., Ms. Bagley's not with us? I assume that's going to be Ms. Coleman?
I think so. In that case. So this is just spelling out the responsibilities of both parties. Paid in full does handle some of our unpaid or folks who are continuing to pay off the balance on their ambulance bills.
Questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the HIPAA Business Associate Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item Five, Discussion of Possible Approval of an Agreement with Epic Fuels for Credit Card Processing at the New Airport Fuel Terminal. Ms. Coleman or Mr. Haro, I guess I'm not sure which.
I, I can speak to that if that's okay. What, what this is, is our fuel terminal has a new processor. New processor is a proprietary processor in our current credit card processing company won't be able to process that. And so we have to use a company that does have the ability to use their processor so that we can process those, those credit card purchases. If there are any questions, I, I'll try to answer those.
Was this a, a competitive, like a bid situation?
No, unfortunately, because this is a, the, it's a proprietary processing terminal, we, we kind of have to go with, with what they're, with their processing company.
Sure. Okay.
Carrie, Carrie did compare this to the system that we use at City Hall in the Queen Mine, and she found that it was very comparable.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other questions? If not, do we have a motion, please?
I move to approve the agreement with Epic Fuels.
Thank you. And we have a second. And Ms. Coronado?
Mayor Pro Tem Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item Number Six, Discussion of Possible Approval for the Purchase of 16 Body cams, I'm sorry, body cameras for the Bisbee Police Department using Office of the Arizona Attorney General's Office Grant in the amount of $20,000, the remainder of the total amount of $64,883.53 using general fund police budget capital improvements to be paid in for annual installments. And I believe our paperwork shows five annual installments. And Chief Chavet, do you, would you like to follow up on this? Our Chief Chavet, are you there?
He's muted, so he may not know.
He is muted, yes.
Trying to.
Can you hear me?
He sent a message to say he was kicked out and he's going to log in again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can. Thanks, Chief.
Okay, my, I guess my signal here at the station is going in and out. Sorry about that.
Uh, so we're, we're now in the discussion phase of the body cams. And would you please let us know why we need 16 of them?
Um, yes, so, well, there's a couple of things I need to mention. First and foremost, it's recommended to have a body camera for each individual officer and not a body camera, not a, a group of four or five that everybody takes turns with. Even having in a few extra for battery charging. Uh, each body camera will be given to and assigned to the officer individually, and that officer would be the only person to use that individual camera. That camera is automatically, those, those files are automatically uploaded onto the cloud-based storage under that officer's information. And then there will, there would be stored the appropriate amount of time based on the type of footage that's covered. On the, the subject line, on the council action form, it does say that there be four annual installments. That is, is, is actually five annual installments, like it says in the motion and in the discussion. That first, under the subject line, the four installments, that was not.
There you are.
This was a grant, $20,000 of this was a grant that was given to us or that we've applied for and been told that we've been accepted. $20,000 from the Arizona Attorney General's Office. That will be, uh, used to make the first payment. The first payment is actually going to be more than that at $29,304.61. And then it'll be four additional payments at $13,894.73. With that, because technology changes as much as it does, they're going to give us 16 brand-new cameras on, first start the program. because technology changes as much as it does, they're gonna give us sixteen brand-new cameras on, first start the program. Those cameras will be used for two and a half years, and at the two-and-a-half-year mark, we'll be given sixteen brand-new cameras to replace the original sixteen. We'll go in and we will be given sixteen brand-new cameras again, and that's all included in the cost, and the reason for that is technology changes, and also the batteries, they don't last as long, and with an officer working a twelve-hour shift, we wanna make sure that when this is all done, that, you know, at the end of the life cycle of the camera, that it is still holding a proper charge.
Right. Okay.
And that is not something that we ask for. That is the, that is the plan that Axon provides. That's one of their standard plans. It's a bells-and-whistle plan by any means. This was, this was one of the not-as-expensive plans.
But this gives us everything we need as far as storage and retention, correct?
It gives us everything we need as far as storage. It gives us the cameras. It gives us all the charging base. It gives us the software needed to not only redact those, that video footage, but also to save, archive, and manage that footage properly. You could imagine an agency like Bisbee Police Department with sixteen officers out there, those cameras can be, we could get a lot of videos in a very short amount of time, and trying to keep those for the appropriate amount of time and keep those safe properly, and then also at the right time, removing those videos when they've aged out at the proper schedule, that could be axed on as, I've heard from other chiefs, that it is very, very user-friendly as far as being able to manage those items.
Great, Chief, thanks. I, you know, my comment is that I think this is something that's very important to the department. And actually, could have been of great use just this last week, when a hit-and-run motorist was stopped and a assault on a police officer occurred as a result of that. Body cam footage would have been very, very beneficial, both as evidence and as a defense against any claims of excessive force. This is not used simply to catch a police officer doing something wrong. In most cases, this exonerates a police officer from doing something, from being accused of doing something wrong. So I'm a hundred percent for this. I think that it's very important. I would indicate that should this pass, I would recommend that our city attorney and our police chief get together and draft immediately an SOP as to the use of these, so that it can be put into the rules and regs of our department, and so there'll be no misunderstandings about when a camera's on, when it's off, and et cetera. So, other comments or questions, please? Ms. Hanson.
This one's for the chief. Is there, are there any reoccurring costs after the five-year?
So the plan that we're going for is a five-year plan. That's what they offer. The reoccurring cost would be after five years, we would have the option to renew a subscription with Axon for evidence dot com, or we could look elsewhere for other storage, but that's, that will be a cost. I imagine the storage cost is gonna be a cost. It is something that's just gonna become a reality for us in the future, and it's unfortunate, but we could take up a lot of storage and trying to store that ourselves. Here, it would be an even bigger challenge. So I definitely think it's the smart way for us to go moving forward.
And that would probably be about the same as what it is for the five-year, which is about eleven and a half.
Well, the one thing that they tell us is. Yeah, as we move forward, you know, after the five years is over, and we decide, if we decided to re-extend, I think they kind of uses it as a selling point, that you've just been, you've just received all brand-new cameras at the end of your last contract, so you don't need to get new cameras this contract, so the hope would be that the next five-year contract would be slightly less, because we paid for those cameras already on the first round. And I just wanna add real quick to what the mayor said, and to what somebody had commented on in a call to the public. You know, the time that we spend looking into allegations, it is, they are very time-consuming, and having the ability to have this footage on hand, it protects, it helps to protect all persons involved. The officer, the person the officer's dealing with, and it kind of levels the playing field. And I will say, my officers are, they are, they have been asking for this for some time. The AG's office funding came through, and it looked like a pretty good opportunity, so we went after it, but this is definitely something that is very much welcomed amongst the officers here at Bisbee.
I have another question. This is for Mr. Ledbetter. If, is there, is there any way to kind of guesstimate what the savings would be and what litigation? Or is there a savings, what the ramifications of having the body cam?
Well, frequently, the existence of body cams lead to the absence of litigation.
Right.
Meaning, the city knows if something went wrong, or the municipality knows if something went wrong, or if it's a strong defense, and generally speaking, when body cam footage is available, those matters resolve themselves. So it does have a direct impact on reduced litigation costs.
Okay. I just wanna make a comment that when I first looked at this, I had the same feel, you know, where the budget is now in the situation that we're in, that we're spending a lot of money for this, but the fact that it's saving us on the litigation, I think it is something that we definitely need to, we need to protect everybody that's involved in any type of incident.
Anybody else have questions or a statement? Leslie?
Yeah, I guess I have questions about the standard operating procedure that the chief and the city attorney are gonna develop. Like, when does a camera, when is it okay for a camera to be turned off? I don't really know, and I would think never, but I just, I guess I just have questions about the policies that are gonna be surrounding this.
Well, that'll come to us for our okay and approval, too.
Okay.
So I mean, I'm not trying to cut you off, but that's something that they'll be drafting, and they'll bring to us to include in that manual. We've, you see, we authorized and voted on that manual.
Okay, so we'll be voting on those policies?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
And if I might, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember John, if you have some specific concerns or insights or observations, please send them.
Okay.
Questions, so we can think about those at the time that we're drafting. Keep that.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you.
I can. Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, I've got questions for you, Chief Acheve.
Yes, sir.
It looks to me, after looking at the cost proposal that the company provided you, that you're looking at a twenty-five, seventy-five percent split, twenty-five, seventy-five percent for the maintenance, the storage, the, all the other ancillary things that go along with it to keep this system up and running. Is that correct? Do you agree with that?
I, I, I think so. That is one thing that, you know, it's always been the challenge. We looked at getting some body cams about four years ago. We got a small grant from Tono Odom, and when the, when we went to purchase and started looking at a little more serious, the storage, that's where the money is at. That's the, that's the high cost of this, is the storage. It's not, it's not the cost of the camera or the dock. Those are expensive, don't get me wrong, but they're, they are, they're a small amount compared to the cost of the storage for the footage and the software to run it.
Thank you. Do any of your officers presently wear body cams at the one expense?
There are a few that do. That is a challenge, that poses challenges amongst itself, because there, there is not a, it's not covered in the policy manual, and those are still all, anything that they record on that still has to be, it, it, it has to be saved. It can't be just gotten rid of, so that causes CDs, the times that they choose to use those personal cameras, that footage has to be burned to a CD and then placed in, into evidence, and unfortunately, that doesn't have the reliability that we would want to have, especially for a case that could, we could be responsible for for decades to come. You know, some felony cases, we have to keep for more than twenty-five years before we can dispose of those after the case has been adjudicated. Some cases, we have to keep forever, and we have to keep it in a, in a, in a a format that will be usable years down the road, and unfortunately, the CDs, I've been told repeatedly, has proven to be an unreliable method for long-term storage.
Did I hear you say that you have no written policy to deal with those personal cameras, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Also, in the documents, it shows that you have fifteen full-time officers and three part-time officers, and how does that, how do you balance that with sixteen cameras?
So right now, that will be, it'll be for the fifteen full-time police officers, and the sixteenth camera will be for the animal control officer.
Thank you. I've read several studies that indicate, now that we have a history with cameras in this country, studies that indicate the benefits of the cameras are outweighed by the costs, and I'll give you an example. The states of, let's see here. Police departments in Connecticut, Illinois, Indiana, Nebraska, and Utah suspended wearing body camera programs citing rising costs. A trial in Edmonton, California, found that body-worn camera that's had an insufficient battery length for everyday policing, especially in cold weather, where battery life diminished more quickly. The sheriff's office in Virginia stopped using mobile cameras due to the unreliability of their on-off buttons and poor integration with their IT system. What is your personal experience with body cameras, body-worn cameras? Do you have any personal experience with them?
Myself, I do not. As I mentioned earlier, the Tombstone Marshal's Office went to Axon, I believe, a year, eighteen months ago or so, for their body-worn camera program, and that's who they, that's who they use. I've talked to Marshall Randall over there a few times about the program, and how well he likes it, and how well it appears to be working and holding up, and I can tell you, I put more weight into somebody who's using it that I know versus, you know, an online review of Axon. I don't know how, you know, I don't know some of the folks that write those things, but Marshall Randall was really, he had nothing bad to say about it. He was really happy with the ease of use, not only for him, but for the, for his officers as well. And so that, I definitely, you know, the Axon salesman is gonna tell us how great their product is, but hearing it firsthand from another police officer, it really, that made me feel better about it. And again, like I said, the ease of use, the durability, you know, as of yet, they haven't experienced any problems with theirs. I think that that battery problem that you're talking about is exactly the reason why Axon builds into their program, the fact that five years, you're gonna get your entire camera system replaced twice. So you're actually, we're actually buying three sets of cameras with this five-year plan. We're getting them at day one, and then we're getting them at two-and-a-half years, and then we're getting brand-new ones again at five years. And I think the intent of that is to help rectify some of those issues with, with a year-long, two, three-year-old battery that's no longer functioning the way it did at day one.
Last question for you, chief. How much money have you budgeted for this school year for your training program, specifically refreshing training for your officers in de-escalation, public relations, community policing, and deadly use of force?
Um, I don't have my budget in front of me right now. I could tell you a lot of things that we cover training-wise, as far as what we budget for our trainings, that we have to send people out of town for to cover tuition costs. A lot of those trainings, deadly force training, things like that are covered annually in-house, and so there's not necessarily a cost for that. But I don't have that number in front of me right here as we speak. Obviously, with new equipment, new cameras, there's gonna be a certain amount of training affiliated with that as well, but again, that would more likely be in-house training done here, not something that we're gonna send everybody out to train for.
Anything else, Mayor Pro Tim?
Yes, I wanna make a statement. I'm concerned that this investment will not benefit the city or the police department or the community when it compared to the past. There's a history of this. A lot of police departments are moving away from this form of monitoring, and points that I'd like to make, lack of a proper plan or operating procedure will result in failure. If we haven't written one already, and we have cameras in use, that's a bad sign as far as I'm concerned. Police departments don't always release their videos. As you know, we've had a lot of problems in this country in the last six months, and those have been a result of videos taken by people on the street, not police videos that were obtained under Freedom of Information Act. BWC to work as it was intended, it has to be adopted along with a systematic reform in police tactics. And I'm just not convinced that this is the right thing to do at this time, especially given our financial situation because of COVID and the pandemic places that's resulted. Well, thank you for the information, chief. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but I'm just, I'm just not convinced that this is the right thing to do at this time.
Ms. Giacamino?
You're muted, Joni.
How much is the subscription gonna cost after the fact? You know, you talk about a subscription after everything comes through, you know, to continue for storage and all that.
You mean after five more years?
Well, he made the statement that, you know, you continue a subscription for storage. How much is that gonna cost every year?
After five years?
After five years, we don't.
I don't have that information.
Okay, and that that's where I kind of have a problem because you came to us with this. And I personally think you should have had your figures in front of you. It would have been nice to have them. Where it says in our.
Those are figures that they don't offer.
So you don't know how much the subscription is going to cost that you're going into a deal with it?
This is a five year contract, so we don't have any idea after that contract is over, what it'll cost to renew the contract.
Interesting. So it says it's coming from the general fund, police budget, capital improvements. How much is in there right now?
I don't I don't have my budget in front of me again. I'm sorry. It would take me a little bit to find that.
Okay, so I guess I have another question then. Where did the monies for the vehicles come from? Did they not drain that account? Correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I could be wrong on that.
They were in the previous budget year.
Okay, thank you. I just I agree with Pollock. I have an issue with spending this much money right now. I don't have so much an issue with the cameras down the road possibly. But at this point in time, you know, we're telling everybody to tighten their belts. We're putting people, I mean, putting contracts on month to month. It just seems a little an extreme amount of money to be talking about with COVID and and the uncertainty. I I I don't really support this. I mean, I it's not that I don't support the cameras. I just the amount of money that's being asked at this time, I think, is a little extreme. So anyway, that's all.
Anybody else? Ms. Klein.
Sorry, had to unmute. My. Some of most of my questions were answered with Mr. Pollack's questions. And I I know the importance of having the body cams for both the public and our officers, and I don't have an issue with that. I am concerned about the cost. So I I don't know. Are there any other grants out there, Chief, that you may have looked at or?
This grant kind of jumped out at us, and we had a very short amount of time to get it put together. Danielle helped us out. Stephanie helped us out. We got it. We got it submitted in very little time. The hope is always that we will continue to find grants, and by all means, if I can find a grant to make the payment next year. I'll definitely make the payment with a grant next year. But that's where, you know, unfortunately. The AG's office didn't offer us enough to cover, although their grant was body worn camera program specific. Or that was one of the items that was covered by the grant was a body worn camera program. Cover the total cost. Twenty thousand dollars is all that they would give us.
Okay, and and I know that they are very expensive. I just, again, we're in uncertain times right now. And I I have a serious issue with spending that much money right now. But I know the importance of the cameras, and I think we need them. So I I don't know.
Okay, anybody else?
David, can I just chime in with the so nine thousand three hundred and four dollars would come from your current budget year? Then the thirteen eight ninety four seventy three would come in future budget cycles. So it's not a one time commitment in this budget year.
Anybody else wanted to say something? I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Coleman.
You're welcome.
Do we have a motion? I'm sorry.
Are you going to do the motion?
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, I move to approve the purchase of 16 body cameras for the business police department using. Office of Arizona Attorney General's Office grant and the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the remainder of the total amount of sixty four thousand eight hundred and eighty three dollars. Thus, using general police budget capital improvements to be paid in five annual.
Thank you, sir. I'll second that. So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Cornetto.
Mayor Proton Pollak.
Nay.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Nay.
Councilmember Higgins. Councilmember Johns.
Nay.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Nay.
Mayor Smith.
Aye, motion fails four to three. Item number seven, possible discussion and possible direction on ambulance subscriptions. Ms. Coleman.
Yes, so we provided some examples of what other cities, towns, and counties are doing with their ambulance subscription programs. For your discussion.
And what is that discussion, folks? I think one of the one one part of that discussion is, are we doing it? And the second is, how much?
Didn't we agree at the last council meeting that we were going to go ahead with this plan?
I, Ms. Cornetto, I don't think that we had a formal motion on that, did we?
You guys discussed it and made it a part of. You guys adopted the ordinance to allow to charge for that. So now the discussion is how much and the amount you want to set for those.
Okay, all right, well, yeah, we, right, okay, we're saying the same thing.
Yes, just a different way.
Yeah, okay. So what what are the thoughts? Ms. Ms. Coleman, do you have a recommendation, please?
Well, I did. Yeah, I I did like the. Folks from Caroline County Emergency Medical Services seem to have a nice range. So folks could pay forty five dollars per year for an individual or family of two. Seventy five dollars for a family of three. Businesses with up to five employees could pay a hundred dollars a year. With each additional employee costing ten dollars.
Okay.
That seemed like a nice range.
Okay. Ms. Giacamino.
Was there any limitations on that, Ms. Coleman, as in if you use it a lot?
It is for emergency. It would be for emergency medical services.
But but what I'm saying is, let's say you have a diabetic in your family, and they actually have, you know, more than 10 emergencies in a year. Is that going to change? Does it say anything like that or or no?
No, it's, well, let's see. Some of them did actually. So let me see.
Limited is the word I guess I was looking for.
Yeah, and that's definitely for your discussion. It doesn't look like those folks did have. A number, but they were it was definitely for emergencies.
So that brings me to my next question. Is there a specific list of what emergencies are, the description? I mean, a verification of emergency. I don't know if that's what.
Well, an emergent a transfer would not be an emergency because the individual was already at the hospital. So an emergency would be transportation to a hospital.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I would. Recommend that we attempt to go in under this present, as Ms. Coleman described. And and give that a try. We can always make changes down the road. This is a new program, and let's get it off the, well, let's get it off. You know, the ground zero, as they say. Ms. Giacamino.
Just to clarify, this again is by, this is optional, correct? This is a buy in.
This is optional.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. This is absolutely optional, and all the advertising for this and solicitations will be showing that it's absolutely. A. A free will situation. Ms. Klein.
Okay, so just. Hold on just a sec. Okay, so for. For clarification, this is only it would only be covered going to the hospital, but not on a transfer?
Correct. Transfers are not covered.
Well, we know that if anybody needs advanced care, they're going to be have to be transferred out. I think it would help in that sense more than just the the ride to the hospital.
That hasn't been anything that we've discussed, nor was that in the ordinance.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
We hadn't discussed that before, Ms. Klein, and that's not that's not within the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Do we have a motion?
We we can.
No motion.
Yeah, we can.
I I, you know, I beg your pardon. This was I I am very, very sorry. This this was discussion, and so I would like to provide direction.
Yes.
To our staff to write it up under those guidelines, bring it back to the council for approval.
Yes, it will come as a resolution as specified for your fee schedule.
Yes, and thank you. And again, my apologies.
That's okay.
Item number eight, discussion of possible direction on the use of air brakes, jake brakes. A couple of things I want to bring up. First of all, we heard a couple of letters. I've gotten lots of phone calls, emails, letters about this. I I have a, from what I do for a living, I've been involved with jake brakes. Because they're used to stop very heavy vehicles on downhill. Grades. And if they are not used in many cases, you can overheat the brakes and the you have a fire. As a matter of fact, my staff looked at one in in California just today. Having to do with a rear wheel fire on a eighteen wheeler having to do with a grade involved. And so this this does happen. I'll ask, I I'm not going to provide, I I know the way there's a legality involved. I'm going to ask Mr. Ledbetter to explain that. In the state of Arizona.
Yes, the highway in question, obviously, is a state highway. And as a state highway that it's controlled by the Arizona Department of Transportation, they take the position by statute that if you. Are to request based upon being a political subdivision of the city. If you request that Jake breaks be prohibited, then they transition the liability for any injury or damages associated with a Jake with a semi failure. That could have been prevented with a Jake break. They transition that to the entity that's requested, in this case, the city of Bisbee. They transfer that liability to Bisbee.
So in other words, if there's a if if there's an accident that. They indicate that a Jake break could have prevented, then we we can pay end up paying for it.
That is what Arizona seeks to do for communities that try to prohibit the use of Jake breaks.
I would, do we can can we find out? Where these loads are picked up? I know it's steel and concrete, basically. Where it's picked up in order to ascertain if there's another route such as ninety two, it could be used instead of eighty. Even if it's, I mean. If it's picked up in almost anywhere, they have their choice of going through Sierra Vista or down eighty, I would think. And and so I would like to find out if we can request an alternate route with them. Which will take away, first of all, they won't have to use, they won't have a a breaking problem, so. I can take that on myself if if we wish, but I think that that's a question that needs to be answered. Mayor Proton, you had your hand up first.
Yes, I have a question also that might give us another avenue to approach this. The EPA, but big break is not a bad thing. It's a very. Problem is, a lot of truckers take mufflers off of the system and they exceed the. Two agencies, DBA, at fifty feet. And if they had the proper muffler on that thing, a Jake break could be used in emergency. They could use it whenever they wanted to. And lessen the impact on the community that they're passing through. Arizona is one of several states that. Has a multi state highway transportation agreement with Idaho, Montana, Nevada, New Mexico, Oregon, Utah, Washington, and Wyoming. They've adopted legislation based on a Colorado law that requires mufflers on any equipment. And vehicle equipped with a J. Now, what that would mean is if we put up some. There was a DB level that could not be exceeded and we wanted to develop. And they can use their Jake break anytime they want. We just give a ticket to the people who have excesses of noise producing engines because they don't have a problem. That's one way to get around. Accidents caused because a lot of you the Jake.
Okay, thank you. As I understand, the the mufflers can cause a loss in efficiency. But that's. I'm not sure that that's needed on that grade. I I just don't know. I I just.
We don't. Yeah, that's a good point.
Ms. Hanson, you had a question.
I guess the assumption has been made that this is all or is somebody actually seeing the vehicles? That it's the the steel and and concrete or whatever the materials for the the wall. But there's also a lot of construction being done by Freeport and APS. So do we know for sure it's just that's who's doing it? Or is it all the vehicles that are doing the construction? Or the construction going on?
All we know from the complaints is that since the construction started, this is when the complaints have started. Since the wall construction.
Okay. Jesus has his his hand up.
Mr. Haro, thank you.
Your mayor, it's my understanding that the construction that went on with the wall, a majority of that material is coming from Benson. It comes it arrives in Benson on freight trains and pick it up there, and then it's delivered to this area.
So they're taking, i- if that's the case, and they're taking eighty because it's four miles closer. Or that Sierra Vista doesn't want them going through Sierra Vista. That would be an interesting question also. So. Let's, I'll get together with staff, and let's see if we can follow up on this and and answer some of these questions so that we can. Bring it back to the public and let them know that we're actually working on this and trying to try to resolve something on this. Is that agreeable to everybody? Yes.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Klein.
Sorry about that. So is this coming up strictly because of the contractors building the wall? I mean, it could it it shouldn't matter what company it is. It could be any trucker, any trucking company, and I think the bottom line is, you know, they have their air brakes for safety reasons. I mean, we are seeing more traffic now, but still, if, you know. I don't know. I I don't think that it's a big issue.
Well, I mean, with with. You're not living in the area that it is an issue or that it's perceived to be an issue.
Okay, so if I move close to Davis Monthen, and then I complain about the. Okay, so if I move close to Davis-Monthan, and then I complain about the air traffic, you know, the air noise, that's kind of the same thing. If you live close to a major highway, you're going to get highway noise.
Okay. All right, well, we're attempting to to come up with a resolution on this, so. Let's see what what we can do on it. Anything else on it? Item number nine, discussion and possible recommendations regarding the evaluation of the job performance of Teresa Coleman, City Manager. This has been requested by Ms. Coleman to be in public rather than in executive session. So this will be in public, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ledbetter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, and that is correct. Proper notice went to the city manager in terms of her twenty-four-hour notice, minimum twenty-four-hour notice, and she has elected to proceed, not in executive session with its employees, evaluation, but rather do it in public. Overall, I would report back, make available to you the individual reviews, but the lowest rating that was given for overall performance was meets expectations. And then overall, her ratings by other council members were quite high. In fact, her overall ratings were deemed exceptional by other participants who did the evaluation. If I could read a couple of the observations first in terms of the overall performance. Generally speaking, positive statements that the city manager leads by example, resulting in a positive turn in employee morale over the last twelve months. In terms of future goals, it is encouraged that she continued to be responsive, answering emails, holding the sessions, some of which are now, all of which have now been transferred to electronic sessions, but the ongoing interaction that she has with the community is a consistent matter for which she's been praised. Again, similar overall evaluation, I've observed and heard the city manager be effective in creating a positive environment for staff, and she guides them in the fulfillment of the city and other department goals. In terms of current issues impacting the evaluation, it would be fair to say that it's been observed that the ongoing investigation involving the ECO has been an issue of concern, and the way the city is in the process of responding to that has been identified as a concern to encourage greater openness on the moment that that information becomes available for the public, and encourage to move that along. Additionally, observations with respect to ongoing communications and discussions with the animal shelter has been encouraged in several evaluations. But again, I'd note that in terms of the overall performance, on average, she comes in at four point seven five. Of course, the highest rating is exceptional at five, with exceeds expectations at the four mark, and then the total evaluation brings her in literally at a four point seven five. Does anyone have any questions relative to these?
Ms. Jacomino?
It's not so much a question, it's a statement. I would just like to request consideration that in the next evaluation that we have a just sit-down discussion on each item. It doesn't have to be public, it can be private, or it can be public if she chooses. And other situations where I've had to do evaluations, this is how it was done, and it made for much clearer understanding of concerns or a praise, a praise, et cetera, that I would just like it to be taken into consideration. Thanks.
And I would just let you know, council member, that the process is the same as other city employee processes, and perhaps if the council directs to make that change, certainly that could be considered and done.
Thank you, sir. No, but no questions, no statements. All right. Ms. Coleman, thank you, Mr. Ledbetter. Really appreciate your work on this. Ms. Coleman, it is time for managers, managers' minutes.
Oh, my goodness. So I did just want to touch on one thing. We did release a statement to the news outlets. Laura Swan did do a very good job of covering the information that is available to the public at this time in regard to the investigation into the actions of earlier in June. We are giving serious consideration to the matter. Multiple folks have been interviewed. Those interviews were transcribed, and we are actually awaiting a complete review of the report by an outside agency just to let the public know that we're not taking the situation lightly in the least.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Higgins?
I move that we adjourn.
And Mr. Pro, Mayor Proton, seconded, goes in favor, signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed, nay. We stand adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.